Okay, good evening. Welcome to the August 12th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the vision of liberty, justice, and all.
First item on the agenda is visitors, oh, I guess we're doing a swearing in first, sorry. So used to. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is swearing in of a new police officer, Brandon Bedore. Chief.
So this gentleman right here, Brandon Bedore, he is just recently appointed by the town manager, full-time police officer for the town of Palmer. Brandon was previously employed by the police department as a per diem dispatcher in October of 21. In May of 22, he was promoted to a full-time emergency dispatcher for the Palmer Police Department. He continued in that capacity until March of 23, at which time he took advantage of an opportunity to attend a full-time municipal police training academy sponsored by the town of Ludlow. He has been a full-time campus police officer as well. And Brandon is fully certified by the municipal police training council and good standing.
Fully certified by the Massachusetts Post Commission and good standing in accordance with the police reform requirements. Brandon will be assigned, or is assigned right now, to the field training and evaluation program of the Palmer Police Department. That's an extensive on-the-job training. He'll be there for a minimum of 12 weeks during which time he'll be evaluated. And upon successful completion of that, he will be acting as a solo police officer and won't need any more training or any more academy attendance. So this is Brandon Bedore, and he's been sworn in by.
Sue, before you, before you start, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, no, welcome. You did the whole interview process, everything's good.
Okay.
Raise your right hand if you'd like to. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brandon Bedore.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will faithfully
Faithfully.
And impartially
And partially.
Perform a discharge
Perform a discharge.
All the duties
All the duties.
And come and upon thee
And come and upon thee.
As Palmer police officer
As Palmer police officer.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, next item is visitor's comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone? Next we have meeting minutes, July 8. Do you want to go sit over there? Oh, you want to see the presentation? I don't know why. I'll try to talk louder, sorry. Can you hear me back there? All right, meeting minutes of July 8. Any comments?
Barry in Council roundtable told you would like to see the use of ARP funds to aid in fuel assistance. I think I had said that I'd like to see at least $100,000 used, just so if we could put that in there. That's my new thought. You know, that's what I had said.
Okay. So they're, yeah, so they're July 8, not the 7?
Yes.
So everybody has their revision? So you have that, you got that?
I got that, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
This is just a spelling error, but underneath Resolution 2025-01, discussion about two lines below that.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the meeting minutes of July 8?
Need a motion?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 8.
All in, all in favor with those corrections?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We have meeting minutes of February 12. Any comments? Seeing, okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Because you weren't here.
I'm sitting up.
Oh, so you weren't here in February? So you should abstain?
Abstain, abstain.
Just because you don't really know what happened.
Gotcha.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, unless anybody has any old business, everybody good? Okay. First item is the warrant for the state primary. We lost Sue, so. That's okay, I mean, do we have?
Yeah, is there any questions on it? It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions or just, it's going to be just?
And I think people have already started voting, right? Like, I think I've already voted.
Okay, so motion, can I have a motion to approve the signing of the warrant?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want the first to sign? There's usually two that we sign.
There should be.
There's only one here.
Is this you?
No, you guys sign there. That's my understanding. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an ARPA request to authorize $25,000 of ARPA funds for fuel assistance. John Latour, Community Development Director. John, you want to come up?
Yeah, I'll quickly provide a little bit of background on this. I know the council had asked about this, and I feel you just made an adjustment to the meeting minutes. The issue with approving $100,000 is unfortunately, we have to have the fund spent by December 30th of this year. We couldn't leave this one open-ended. So continuing on with our prior application process and keeping the variables the same, we felt that we could only put $25,000 knowingly that we would expend that as of December 30th date. Originally, when I talked to John, we were thinking about putting $50,000 in, but when we crunched down to it, between now and December, we felt comfortable we'd only be able to spend the 25. So rather than close it out and have to send the money back, we figured put $25,000 cap on it right now, and then that's what we put going forward. That's the background. And then, John, feel free to add anything else on to that.
No, that's pretty, pretty much it. I mean, you've approved funds in the past, and we were able to do it in a quick order. But this is a little bit different, the deadline being December. If it was a few months past that, you know, we probably would be able to do more. But it's, there's a lot that impacts this. It's the price per gallon, you know, right now, between $3.77, $3.88 a gallon, so.
Now, when we work with residents to allocate this money, do we pay the price per gallon from their own supplier, or do we use the supplier that, you know, we have a contracted rate for the town? Do we use that supplier?
It's theirs. It's their supplier.
Oh, okay.
This is done through reimbursement, correct? If they
No, it's direct to the
We pay the contractor direct, or the vendor directly?
The vendor directly, yes.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason why we're not able to extend beyond December of 2024 is because that deadline, we have an open-ended, you can't have an open-ended PO. If we have a contract with someone directly, we could continue that on because it's outlawed for two more years, but because we're up against that deadline to have it expended without having allocated vendor, we have to have it gone by 2024.
You, you have other money, though, that you have for, so some of those donations we just got were fuel assistance, correct? And then is there fuel assistance also in part of the community development grants?
Oh, no, this was, and they haven't opened it up yet, and they won't, we won't know until March of next year. And that's the Attorney General's Office when they were providing fuel assistance money.
Okay, okay. But you do have money that was donated, right?
We, every year, we get funds that are donated by the Mullen family.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just, I mean, I totally understand it, but I still don't like it.
Understood.
I think, you know, for where all this money has gone to, you know, last year, you were able to help 70, and this year, you're going to help 35. It's just, I don't know, I guess I should have spoke up a lot earlier.
What's our total that we have, right?
Right now, it's zero until, until we have the $25,000.
Yeah, and that's why, Phil, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take that as a negative of waiting because ultimately, the deadline of December 24, 2024, excuse me, is the deadline. There's nothing you could do to change that.
No, I'm saying that I probably could have if I would have spoke up earlier, that you could have started, started the process of applications for fuel assistance three, four months earlier. That's all I would say. Theoretically, I just
Hopefully, no one has a fuel bill.
I just would like to see more of this money, instead of just always being used for town stuff itself, go to the people that the money came from.
Yeah, and also, too, if we get through, if we burn this money fast, and we think we have time in December, and there's funds available, we can circle back. But right now, I feel confident of approving the 25. And if, again, if we burn through that extremely fast, we can come back and ask for an increase.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the $25,000?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is an ARPA request to authorize $42,560 of ARPA funds for a 2024 Chevrolet Colorado for the Inspection Services Department.
Yeah, and Bill Fenner is not here right now. If you want to wait, that'd be great, and if we can postpone this one until he's back. I'll give you the quick summary, though, is that he's finding that the town EV vehicles, based on some new development we have in town, are not able to get into different lands that we have and we're building on. So really, a truck is extremely needed, again, because the EV, EV vehicle does not kind of off-road well, and we really need a vehicle that has, we can utilize in those situations. So with that being said, I would approve, recommend that we approve this, and also that it'll free up a vehicle that we can utilize for our new facilities director when they start as well.
Is this vehicle available? Is this vehicle available?
Yes, this is available.
Okay. Phil?
That was going to be my question. So what, what is it, a Prius or whatever that they're using now?
The Volt.
The Volt, so it's just strictly electric, not gasoline electric?
Correct.
Okay, because I see, you know, which, which cracks me up is that if they use the heat or the air conditioning, it kills the battery too quick. My other question is, I totally don't agree that you need a pickup truck. I guess I'd like to know, what, what tools does he need to perform? Does he carry around ladders? Everywhere I know of in town, you can access your roads, what's the longest driveway that he might have to go down? Can they not park in the street and walk to the house that's being built? You know, you're going to spend $42,000 on a brand-new pickup truck, extender cab? Why does it have to be an extender cab? Tarnow cover? Could you not utilize a van, a Ford Ranger? I get the four-wheel-drive aspect because of winter, but I just don't see that. I mean, okay, it's going to, you're going to free up the vehicle, you do have a use for it, great. But, and why does it have to be brand new? Can't you go through the municipalities' places and find something that's used? You know, it's just, for as long as I've lived here, who have not had, what was the other person used, a Ford LTD, I think he used when he was the building inspector? And there was no issues, and now all of a sudden, there's an issue to get into a place to inspect, which, I mean, I don't know, unless he carries a ladder for some reason or whatever, I don't know why you couldn't park at the beginning of the driveway, on the road, put your boots on, walk into the place, and save yourself $42,000, find something new. I just, I totally don't see, you're not selling me this.
That's why, if we want to hold on this till Bill is back, he can outline everything he utilizes for his position.
Is he going to be, is he planning on coming?
He's going to come back tonight, yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll put this on hold then. All right, next is Eric Duda, the Superintendent of Pathfinder, is here to give us an update.
Thank you, thanks to the council and our
You can sit down if you want.
Town manager, oh, perfect. Yeah, we actually have a video I was going to play first, and I said I'd block the screen, so if that's okay with you, I'll start that, and then I'll just make a few comments after. Does that work?
Okay, sure.
And every, anybody in the audience, if you want to see the video, you're just going to have to come over here.
Can't put it on this one, too?
It's not working.
No. Guess we use ARPA funds to fix the TV.
Perfect. All right, that's a very nice video. Did the kids make that, or did you have? Yeah?
Absolutely, thank you, the Councilor Williams, for stealing the thunder, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's right, it's a fair question, I appreciate that. And thanks first, I just want to extend my appreciation to the council and the new town manager, Brad Brothers, for inviting me here, I appreciate it. I don't recall, this is going into my fourth year as superintendent, and prior to that, serving five years as a principal, I don't remember having an invitation like this, so I appreciate the opportunity. Yes, the students made that, a student made that video, that's just about two years old, so we'll be updating it this year. And it's a video we used for like the last 18 months to show the nine towns, Palmer, of course, being one of our most important as far as size and number of students attending. We shared that video. The student graduated and went on to, majored in advanced manufacturing, used to be called machine shop, wasn't majoring in that video or anything, but clearly had a real talent, so we were happy to have him make that video for us. Yeah, I wanted just to review a few things, again, at the request of the new town manager. And at a later date, I'd be happy to bring some students here and talk as well, but I wanted to, I wanted to show that video first because I know many, if not all of you, have stepped foot in our building before, and I appreciate it, and I wanted to remind the council that that's a 52-year-old building, it's the original building. There's been an addition added on in the 80s, but if you walk in there, you, you wouldn't know that. It's in better condition than nearly any school around here that's 50 years old. And I'm really proud of that, having been a graduate myself, have attended there in the 90s, and I know we have other graduates sitting, actually among us, including our chief of police, who just walked out a few minutes ago. I think it's a sense of pride, and I wanted to share that with everybody here, that that's an old building that's been taken care of, that we can be really proud of. The students maintain everything there, they make sure we're in, you know, great condition and, and help us out during and after-school hours. To recap a little bit about the year, we've undertaken a lot of student projects, and again, I'm going into my fourth year as superintendent, I want to take the opportunity tonight to remind everybody here that we're happy to be a community partner. And Councilor Barry and I spoke, we were quickly chuckling when I walked in about two years ago now, but if there's something we can do that's beneficial to the students, that can be beneficial to the town of Palmer, please reach out to us. We're, we're happy to help any one of the nine towns that we serve. Palmer is very important, as I mentioned, to us, not only because are we only a few hundred feet away from where we're sitting right now, but we have nearly a third of the building, nearly a third of the students are Palmer students. We have about 180 Palmer students attending right now. Demand's very, very high. If everyone's not aware, we cannot accept all the Palmer students that apply. So we have an incredible number of applicants from the eighth-grade class every year, and that's a challenging process. I've been asked, what do you do to fix this, from parents? And the, the truth is, we just increase capacity. We need, if we had more seats, we would take every kid, and we just don't have the room. It's a, it's a double-edged sword. It's a nice problem, and it's a bad problem to have, because having this wonderful career tech education offering right in Palmer, and for some students not to be able to attend is unfortunate. But we do our very best to get as many as we can in. As far as other things in Palmer, I want to just quickly highlight, and I'm happy to answer any questions, we've had some really wonderful partnerships with businesses this year. We partnered with 51 businesses. When I say partnered, we had students placed there for actual employment, paid employment every other week through cooperative education. The DPW in Palmer, the newer, I was going to say new, it's newer now, DPW director has been a tremendous partner, has hired a couple of our students, and is in line to hire more. We even have somebody working with the DPW right now, who was one of our students who went on the path to cooperative education, worked there, and is still placed there. So we're really pleased with that connection and relationship that's been developed quite recently. It's about a two-year-old relationship. So I, I thank the town for that, and of course, the DPW director. Another highlight I wanted to mention, we have some nice companies in this town, like Adaptis, they've been a longtime employers of ours. And another company we partnered with that's really, really just a remarkable, remarkable industry, and in the last few years, I've gotten to know Mark Borsari better at Sanderson MacLeod, the CEO and president of Sanderson MacLeod. He's taken a real interest in partnering with us and being on the forefront of a private and public partnership. And he's been working with our students in a special program called TWIST. It's an acronym for, you know, technical training, and he's been training and accepting our students over there during daytime hours in a leadership program called the TWIST Leadership Program, and he pays our students to be there and learn all day long, every other week. It's pretty impressive, and that's a very special relationship, and it's happening right here in this town, so I want everybody to be aware of that. He's, he's not just promoting work for them, but promoting them being really strong citizens and considering being business owners or research and development leaders in the future. So it's pretty remarkable and powerful. Some other things I wanted to quickly mention that have changed a lot in just the last handful of years is we offer a huge number of athletics right now. I don't think there's any athletic offering, with the exception of swimming, that I can think of. There may be something, but it's an outlier that we don't offer now, so we're happy to do that. We've been requested from the town of Palmer and other towns on a number of instances now to be the host school and host the teams, and we've done that. We host four towns currently for wrestling, Palmer's one of those. We host the, because we have a number of players now, and some towns have had declining enrollment, and you can't host their own, their own teams. I believe we had Palmer partnered with us for boys soccer, and there's been others now, so we're happy to do that wherever we can and work with, of course, Palmer and the other towns. A couple little quick highlights I wanted to mention, I think I have most of them. Adult education, I came to this council just over a year ago and discussed the acquisition of the Country Bank property, which was, believe it or not, just recently finalized, it took a long time. But we, we do own that property now with the four corners over here, and we started to making sure we're maintaining the grounds, and we're going to be doing a lot more when our students are, are in session. But we're going to be running adult education there, and we've started offering more programs this year, and we started really ramping that up. I believe we ran between 15 and 18 by the close of the school year, stuff like CPR, certification training, and, you know, professional skills-type courses, resume writing, helping people land jobs, we've done all sorts of courses like that. On campus, we've ran courses in culinary arts and carpentry and different things, and we're going to keep expanding on that. And the courses we can run at the bank property, we plan to expand and do it there as a real hub for this, this town especially, it's so, it's so convenient, such a great location. I think council, councils, Councilor Sizer here mentioned at one point that it was sort of like a government hub here on this corner, and I forget the exact terms he used, but I think that was a good way to look at it. You look at this corner here with the police department at town hall, and now we have an expansion of the educational institution right in this town, operating adult ed. What a great use of a property, and I just openly want to thank Country Bank again, and we're going to be saying something in this paper very soon about their generous donation of that property to us. So that was a wonderful thing as well. Last two things I'll mention is, I guess last one thing I'll mention. If you didn't see it in the paper, one of the things we're really proud of, and again, it impacts 180 Palmer students and all of our other students, is we, we were the first of the nine towns, and I think still the only of the nine, to have a school dog. So we have a dog now, his name's Scout, it's an English Golden Retriever, and he's just a remarkable little pup, and we raised him, and we got all grant funds to pay for him through our insurance company. And the grant funds cover not only the acquisition of the dog, but to pay for vet bills and for grooming and literally everything, so we have all that paid through grants. And we're, we're just blessed to have him, he's just a part of our school now, and the students get to see him every day, and it's been, it's been pretty special. And everybody that's a dog, whoever knows how special dogs can be. I guess there's a second to the last thing, I retract what I said. I didn't bring a list because I didn't want to rattle off a bunch of numbers, but if you, if you've seen any of the articles in the Palmer Journal or any of our local media, we've been really, really adamant and really working hard to secure competitive grant funding. And we did not request any capital funds at all from any of the nine towns, that includes Palmer this year. I, I don't want to write this in stone, but it's a high likelihood, we won't be requesting any next year either. We also don't have any debt, I'm very proud of that. The year I became super, that we had finished paying off all debt, so there's no debt in the school, we're not paying off a school building, we're not paying off a roof, and we haven't asked you for capital. And we, as you know, went to a 1.1% increase in the modest increase, and President Barry, I saw mentioning that at the public hearing when I was watching it on Impact, and noticed that, and I appreciate that, because we are being very, we're being very aware of what our towns can afford, and we're, I'm going to continue the trend of being fiscally conservative with that and still offering a premier education. So we appreciate your support.
Any questions for Eric?
I was just going to say, we still have ARPA funds, if you need something, if you've got an idea for, for the school, we helped with the track up at Palmer High, so hope you bashle.
Running low.
How long do you anticipate renovations taking at the Country Bank building?
Well, one of the steps we're going to take is speak to the, you know, building instructor, of course. There isn't a ton that we really need to do, there's just furniture that kind of needs to be moved out, and, you know, maybe some new carpet or whatnot, but the lobby area is really all we're going to be using, so we'll just place some tables in there, and I think we should be in pretty good shape. Down the road, we might do more, but to start quickly, I don't think we're going to need to. So that should be, that should be pretty, pretty quick. Down the road, it'll be a little bit longer out.
And do you have good turnout for the adult education class courses?
Some yes, some no, you know, we, we, some of our culinary courses that were sort of a one-night, you know, bring your spouse, make a special chicken dinner, learn how to make soup stocks, that was very popular. Some of the longer ones, not, not as much. Art courses were extremely popular in this area, we could not believe the demand for art courses, so we had a ton, and we have a lot more of those planned now. We ran a year-long plumbing course, a year-long electrical course, those were very, very in high demand. It was through something called the Career Tech Initiative, and that was a Commonwealth Corporation grant we wrote, and we actually just got approved for another one, we're running equipment maintenance and like operator licensing, so that'll help the DPW directly. And we're also going to be running another carpentry course. So to fully answer your question, we started off with strong demand, but then, as far as the plumbing course went and the electrical course went, the second year we ran it, last year, was through the roof. We had 12 spots in each, and we had over 200 total applications, so it was really, really high. So that grew significantly when we were trying to find people. That was a, again, grant-funded, that paid salaries, paid equipment, paid tools, and it even paid the cost of tuition for the individuals enrolling. So those were pretty, pretty impressive.
The bank building, are they still going to utilize their ATM there?
Yeah, so the ATM is, we signed an agreement to allow the ATM to stay where it is for a short period of time, anywhere from six months or more. Their plan is to build a standalone ATM booth you drive up to on those grounds, and we're happy to work with them and do anything possible to make that happen, and they knew that when we acquired the property.
So how do we, how do we expand the, the students into the municipality, like town Like Town Hall, IT, Board of Health, Finance, like all those different departments, like how, what's, what do we need to do to?
Yeah, I'll still superhand do his thunder on that. We've talked quickly about really just simple things that we can do. I mean, you look at our website, our website needs revamping, that's a simple one, I know you guys have a program for that. We've also talked about different things like Burley Park. If we're gonna eventually gonna put up a, a building on there or something, is that something they can help with? And I know we have plan designs from, I forgot what year, maybe 2013?
When Charlie Blancher was town manager.
Yeah, somewhere in that timeframe. And those are all things that as they come up, we'll actually be looking for with both schools, not just Pathfinder, but both schools to get a partnership and really get the students' real life experience in Town Hall. So yeah, and I know we had a partnership too, I believe, with, was it Dean's assessing office? I think we had one.
A student post there.
I know Palmer High had a student assessing office.
Okay, yeah, I do know that we had a Pathfinder student.
We had one here, I don't remember what area they were in. And we're happy to place students for employment every other week. We do that with other towns now, Town of Munson has somebody working with the town manager, so we're happy to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's definitely want to foster, Embril.
Yeah, and I will always make the plug, as somebody who started in this Town Hall as an intern, it can be very helpful for both the town and the student, for their future ambitions.
Anything else?
I have one question for you. So, you know, getting 200 people to apply for 12 spaces, I mean, that's pretty impressive. What, what outlets are you using for advertising?
That was, it is impressive, and that was pretty amazing. We started off having a little difficulty on what would work best, and social media had some limitations, et cetera, but what we ended up finding out for that particular demographic and that particular, we're trying to largely look for unemployed and underemployed adults that are looking to retrain, that's really what that is all about. What we ended up finding was Rock 102 and Laser 993 really, really got a lot of volume for us, for whatever reason, radio ads helped. We tried running radio ads for other things we've done, like our open houses and career nights, and they, it didn't work as well for the eighth graders, it worked really well with the adults. And that was probably the best thing we did. We also advertised on News 22s, you ever see the little videos that pop up on there, Mass Live? And we tried those things, and they had some, some effect, but the, the radio for that worked the best.
Interesting.
We were surprised. We tried all sorts of things.
And, I mean, the, so you're getting people beyond the school, the school system, so it's not just parents or?
Yeah, so the, the, I guess referring to the electrical and plumbing cohorts, we ran two cohorts of 12 each for two years. That really was open to, the way the grant works, it was open to anybody that lived in Hampton County, or sided in Hampton County, that was unemployed or underemployed according to a certain criteria, whatever that number was, and, and they were adults. This isn't for students, this was after dark, and those programs ran Monday through Thursday, I think from like four to nine at night, and they were about between a 200 and 220 hour total course offering, and then we had a certificate for them, and then we helped with job placement. We partnered with the One Stop Career Center and Mass Hire and that as well, and we're continuing to partner with them. So they helped us with, we went to the Palmer Library, for example, and, and worked on trying to recruit people early on. And then they worked with placement, we had community partners, we have partners right now in this town, because they were construction, and Kozlick signed on saying, okay, this carpentry group, we're interested in helping place these individuals, so.
And still, the conversation we had, so for instance, for IT, there has to be somebody to be able to teach them, and same thing with, if it was website, someone sitting here on this side who is going to be assisting them with website development, right? There needs to be someone overseeing it from a staff potential, right?
Yeah, I mean, so the cooperative education program is, you know, sort of like a internship on steroids. So every other week, the students place, but yes, I mean, like if you had an IT person onsite, or I don't know if the town still contracts out their IT work, but if you did, that would, might be a good fit if you had someone onsite. So we could look at like our, our business technology students might fit in sort of any capacity here, and then there's other core students that might fit. So we'll just have to figure out where the connection is. Now, if, if there was like an IT need where the TV on the rear of the wall here is not operating, and we, you know, we wanted to see if our, our students could, could handle correcting it for you, that's a pretty easy thing we do for municipalities, and Palmer uses us a little less than sometimes in other towns. And it's a simple work, and I talked to, to the town manager, Brad Brothers here, I think he's interested in working with us even more, so that's exciting. But, but it's a simple work request, and we would have students and a teacher, you know, if this is something that worked for us, come in here and, and fix it, and that's it. That's sort of just a, a one and done.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, thanks for the invite, I appreciate it, thanks.
Anytime you want to come and let us know stuff, feel free just to give him a call, we'll get you on the agenda, okay?
I really appreciate that.
You don't have to wait for us, if you have something you want to talk about.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you guys want to switch back so you can hear, or are you good? Take the moment now. Yeah, you take the moment now.
I had one.
Okay, so Bill, we got to, we got to the vehicle while you were not here, and so we are gonna head back to it. Phil has a lot of questions for you, so if you want to come up, great. So we know, we know the vehicle, we have the memo that you had provided, but Phil, I'll let you go first.
Well, I did ask some questions, and I was told that, they do have another use for the Prius. My thing was, what, what do you use for tools that you need, a pickup truck?
I actually priced SUVs, I priced, and the pickup was actually the cheapest to, one of the reasons the vehicle that I chose was because of ground clearance. All the smaller SUVs don't have the ground clearance, and as everybody knows, the Bolt EVs that we have now have about four and a half inches of ground clearance, so getting into construction sites is just about impossible. So I did a whole bunch of searching, this actually came out, had the best ground clearance, protection for underneath comes standard with all the skid plates. If you go into an SUV, it was a lot more money.
Right, I was like, I guess, why, why do we need an extended cab, a pickup in general? I mean, I don't know, you carry ladders, what?
It's not, the standard, the, the crew cab is pretty much of the industry standard now. Try to find a standard cab truck is next to impossible, but I'll special order it, and they're two years out.
Why couldn't we go to like a municipality and maybe get something that's used? I get what you want, four-wheel drive, and I expressed to them was, why, why is it that, I mean, what's the longest driveway getting into one of these sites?
So I have three houses right now.
Not just park on the, on the street itself, walk into the site? Are you carrying ladders, what?
No, it's not, it's for safety purposes, really. I have three houses going in town right now that have driveways over 600 feet. So is it a big deal to get out? In, in the winter it is. It's a huge deal, it's a safety factor for myself and for whoever we hire for a local inspector.
I don't know, it just seems like we've survived without one for all these years. They use an LTD. I mean, what about something like even a small Ford Ranger, four-wheel drive, you know?
You're in the same exact price range though, that's the problem. Everybody's, they're all comparable.
Can't we find something that's used?
Then we're buying someone else's problems.
You know? I mean, what do you, how many miles a, a week you figure you put on a vehicle?
So, the, the EV that I drive has about 12,000 miles on it now. I think the one that Bonnie had, which was car 28, that one's got, I think, around 12,000 on it. So since 2017, they put roughly 24,000 miles on it.
Since, I was just asking how, how many a year you're putting on, you figure, I lost the numbers you just gave me, so I can't. You put 10,000 miles a year on a vehicle?
Probably not.
Like 2,000.
2,000 miles.
Yeah, a couple thousand miles a year. So a, a purchase like this, the truck's gonna last 20 years. It's not something that would be looking to replace in, you know, in any short term.
Oh yeah, I mean, at that mileage, it should definitely last you 20, 30 years, especially if you're fluid filming them like the DPW does.
Okay, so I, I will just say this, I know that Bill's been using his own vehicle on occasion, you know, this came forward because I had said something to Brad about, you know, that's not acceptable, no one should have to be using their own vehicle, no one should have to be going to construction, construction sites where you don't know if you're gonna pick up a nail or something else into your tire. So I understand that we have not had, you know, a, a vehicle for the use of the inspector probably forever, with the exception of those EVs. I don't think that that is the type of vehicle that we should be asking our inspectors to go out on, you know, to, to construction sites with. So I don't think that it's unreasonable to, you know, spend this amount of money so that he can have a reliable, reliable vehicle. I do agree with his statement of, you know, a lot of times it is safety issues. If you have, you know, if you're going to a site in the winter and it's all, you know, rutted out from snow, freezing thawing, freezing thawing, or just going up to any, anything that has, you know, the littlest bit of ice, and if he has to walk, you know, then, you know, then he falls, and then we gotta work in his comp case. So, you know, we need to give him the tools to do his job, and I don't, I don't think that this is unrealistic. And that film that you're talking about, is that the undercarriage spray that we were talking about?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, my understanding is that is after the fact, so we get the vehicle and then we send it somewhere. I don't know if DPW is doing it or not, but if they're not, it's like $2,000, I think, or some very, you know, reasonable, yeah, like a reasonable amount of money to take it somewhere and have that happen. And I think that that's important because the biggest thing is gonna end up being, you know, we're gonna have to make sure that we are, you know, washing it and getting, getting the salt off, because that's what's gonna destroy this vehicle, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna make it to 20 or 30 years because it's gonna get corroded underneath if we don't take care of it.
I just feel that you could have found something decent for less money, a Jeep, something four-wheel drive. Again, through, I, I know you, you're restricted on where you can purchase vehicles, correct? Like municipalities?
Is this, is this price a state bid price through, so you're, so you're gonna have to do that anyway, so it might be less expensive anyway?
I look, so just, I really did my due diligence, I looked at Chrysler products.
I was gonna say, we own a Jeep, crappy Jeep. Not 42,000.
I've been looking around online, just that somebody used vehicles in town and stuff, and there's some decent deals out there. So.
I, I mean, I, I think that, yeah. And I, and we're, and we're gonna disagree on this one, I think, Phil, at least me and you. I, I think that, you know, we don't need, I, I, again, it's the first time we're buying a vehicle, I think that we need to buy a new vehicle, I don't think $42,000, you know, is that much money to make sure that our inspectors are able to get around. So I will make a motion to approve $42,560 from ARPA funds for, so let me just say this, before I say specifically this Chevy Colorado or whatever, I mean, I want to make sure, I mean, so this isn't state bid, so you can't just go to this company and do it.
We'll verify, we get three quotes of the same.
And if they're not available, what I'm going to say is I would like to leave the option open for you to get something comparable that is available, because again, we still have massive supply chain issues where we're waiting 18 months for vehicles. So I don't want to tie you to my vote being for this exact vehicle if it's not available. So if everyone understands that, that's my motion.
Yep, second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. All right, that passed.
Barbara, can I just make a statement?
Of course.
Is this reason 429 why electric vehicles aren't gonna work for America?
I don't know.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
Pretty much, what they're saying, if you uses the heat, or you use the air conditioning, it kills, it kills the batteries.
So the batteries have already been replaced once in these, both cars, under warranty. They're nearing the end of their life the second time around, and it's $10,000 to replace the batteries.
Nice.
Or car.
But I also think, I mean, it's, this is not really a place for a discussion about electric vehicles, but there's a range of quality, and this, these two came to the town on a grant, and they're about the lowest end of electric vehicles. And it's also 2017 technology, and 2024 electric vehicles are far more reliable, and I'm, you know, speaking as somebody who, and I'm not saying that that is necessarily the direction you need to go, but it is also, we're working with 2017 technology, and it's what came off of a grant, so it didn't really cost the town anything to begin with.
And that will be up to Brad to decide what he's gonna do when those batteries go.
Yep.
And that will be another, another day, another conversation. All right, thank you, Bill. All right, next is, next item on the agenda is Tina Broman, our Veterans Agent.
Can anyone stick up for a little?
Hi Tina.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Good evening. Tina Broman, Veteran Service Officer. So tonight, I'm gonna tell you some things that are going on, pretty exciting. Wednesday, I'm gonna have a pre-recorded message or interview kind of thing with WARE. I've been on there a couple times already. So we're gonna have a conversation about different events that are going on in the So if anybody wants any plugs, I can put it in for you. The last time I was here, I think it was, maybe not the last time, I was talking about building bridges, the lunches that we were putting on, I had passed this around, this is the new one. The first one was July 12th, we held it at the AMVETS, and the AMVETS were gracious enough to, and continuing to give us that space for free. Building Bridges, for people who don't know, is an organization through a Methodist Church that takes donations or sponsorships, and they bring in the food for free. And then what we have to do as like a host town is heat the food up, have volunteers to serve it, and that's it, no cost to our, our own. It was wonderful, the first time in July, I had only like three days to advertise it, so I was really sweating bullets, didn't know if anybody would show up. We had seven volunteers, and we had about 30 people, that's not including the volunteers. So that was, I was super excited about that. The second one was just August 6th, I believe, and that one had about 40 people and volunteers, and that, not, not including the volunteers. So for Building Bridges, if, if you don't know what it is, it's open to all the communities around us, not just Palmer. Ludlow has them, they're so big now that they do two seedings. And Munson is going to have their first lunch in September, not exactly sure on the date, but they're having their first one in September. So our veterans and a guest can go to any of these communities, they have social media and everything that, that goes on. I'm plastering these everywhere and trying to promote it to everyone for people who don't go on social media. And they're just for camaraderie, good food, it's a hot meal, a balanced meal, and we even bring dessert, so they don't provide it, so we make sure that we have good desserts. So I've already had people come up, and I think about three organizations have already asked how do we sponsor a meal? Which is great, because Building Bridges isn't asking us for anything, but of course, they would love to get money back. They're not asking for it, and they said we don't have, we're not pressured to give any money at all, any sponsorships at all. But because these people have come to the first one, the second one, and they've heard about them, they're reaching out to me and saying, how can we sponsor this? And right now, with the amount of people that are coming in to the lunches, it's about 250, so if anybody wants to sponsor a lunch, it's 250. And then, of course, as it grows, I think it's 100 or more, it's like 350. And it's quality food. I mean, my friend and I, the last one we served was baked chicken thighs, roasted potatoes, green beans, and we had vanilla cake with chocolate frosting, and chocolate cake with vanilla frosting, there's coffee, water, and of course, you know, they can get beverages, you know, somewhere else. So everyone has loved it, it has been an amazing, it's just been an amazing thing for the town. Everybody just has a good time, everybody's smiling, and just happy. Food makes people happy, food makes me happy, and so when I can give people free food, it makes everybody happy, you know? So that was one of the things I've worked on, I said that the first time I talked about I said that the first time I talked about it, it was a little bit coming, you know, about six months or so, but now that it's here, I think it's here to stay and I think it's only gonna grow. And the AMVETS has a perfect space because I don't know what the capacity is, like maybe 150 or something?
200 without opening the doors.
So Ludlow has to have two seedings from 11:30 to 12:30, 12:30 to 1:30 because they only have about 50 to 60 and they've already outgrown that. So that's why they do this two seeding. So can you imagine if we are doing that and, and outgrowing that spot and we have to have two seedings? I mean, that is a huge goal because everybody will be able to partake. There's not like a cutoff and say, hey, nope, we can't, you know? So that, that's been a huge success, I look forward to it growing. And I know we have veterans on the council, you went to the first one?
Yep.
Yep, you went to the first one, did you enjoy it?
Yep.
It's like seeing everybody come.
Absolutely, yeah. So it was a lot of fun and everybody helped and chipped in. We had one of the, the treasurer of the ladies auxiliary at the AMVETS. Her two grandsons volunteered last time, they were teenagers and they were fantastic. I gave them aprons and they did everything, like they got tips. Like nobody told them they had to get tips, but they were, they just were fantastic. And it was so nice to be able to bring in young people to be helping, especially it's easy for the summer, but I might tap into the, the pathfinders. It was just so nice to see the young kids interacting with the older people. That was just, it was fantastic and they felt good about it. You could tell those kids felt really good about what they were doing. I went to clear a table and they're like, nope, nope, we got it, we got it. I mean, it was fantastic. And the first one we did, there was a young lady there from, actually West Springfield. Her parents were there, her dad's a, he was actually a person who was speaking at the, at the meal. And she jumped right in and started to volunteer and she had a fantastic time too. So it's, it's nice for everybody. We have, we have a 92-year-old man that comes, you know, and he loves it because he's diabetic and he's like, I can't eat this stuff at home, so I'm gonna eat, you know, here. And then he told his daughter who brought him.
Shoots him insulin up.
I'm like, but I told, his daughter told me, you know, we were talking about volunteering and his daughter told me that he wants to volunteer. I said, okay, he can be the door greeter, you know, it'll give him a sense of, you know, pride and something to do. You know, I said, he could be the door greeter. So everybody wants to be involved and I just think it's, it's working out exactly the way I hoped it would and I'm, I'm really proud to bring that to the town and for the people. Any questions about the building bridges? Nope, okay. So in November, I'm gonna be bringing, I'm working with the library now to get a date and the different vendors. It's called, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before, it's called Know It Before You Need It. Chicopee had a very successful Know It Before You Need It. And it's all these services that people need mostly for their parents or grandparents or whatever, but you know, the, the legal things about when they might need help, getting older on and age and estate planning and, you know, all these different things that you're not thinking about. Like veterans have aid and attendance and that can work for your, for the veteran or the spouse, you know, and that's very intricate and it takes a long time. So it's really important for people to come and listen to these things that come up when you're in the, the thick of it and the emergency of things and you're like, oh, shoot, what do I do? I get those calls every day. So this is gonna be really important and I'm taking my time putting it together. Usually I'm like, yeah, let's do it right now. But I'm really taking my time to make sure we get the best vendors that'll be proper for this area because that's always a sticking point because you're either hammed, hammed in or hampered. We're kinda, we are hammed in, but it's like we're in this weird area. So we're gonna be putting that together and that, I'm looking forward to that. Superintendent Duda was here and when I met him, it was in the spring. We did a veterans lunch for, at Persos, their cafe, fantastic. I know I've talked about it before, I think. And I plan on working with them again. It was an absolutely fantastic idea and that's kinda what springboarded me to building bridges because we had that for free, but I also kind of absorbed that cost because it was just such a great thing to do. But I think I'll be working with them more, maybe have their servers come to our site on Friday or, or something like that. I'm trying to mix and mingle the students and utilize what they're talking about with, with the youngsters because I saw how great that worked out. Let's see, a big one is Friday, September 13th for Military is Free for the Biggie. I don't know if anybody knows this, last year was the first time I went as part of our organization, Western Mass Veteran Service Officers Association, and we have a table there and it is one of the biggest events, like it's outreach for veterans in the nation. That's huge. If anybody's gone to the, the, the Biggie, it's the whole state row, the whole entire street and a little bit beyond and on the grass and everything. And they have the VA, like every single thing you can think of for veterans is there. And the VA is there, they have the tents and they have computers set up. I had a problem with My Healthy Vet, I didn't fix it for like over a year and finally I was like, oh, I'm gonna go over there. And since that day, September 13th of last year, I have My Healthy Vet and it's so easy. But everybody is there to walk you through things. You get free t-shirts and all kinds of free swag, you name it, you can get it there. And there's lines, trust me. There's the, even, was it the Agawam Cemetery? They're there, so like everything you can imagine for veterans is at this event. It is huge and it is free. So there's no reason for veterans not to go, other than if you have a transportation issue or something. But, but it is an amazing event that I couldn't believe that has been in this area for years and we didn't know how big it was. And I guess every year it kinda grows too, but I'm really happy that I'm part of that. And let's see, oh, and, and that day is the only day that any vendors are allowed only one day at the Biggie. Because if you go to the Biggie as a vendor, you have to stay the entire time. So they allow this special, they allow us to take up the whole street, both sides, and only for one day. So I thought that was really cool, the, the Biggie to do that, because that's a big deal for them. Let's see, I think, I think that's it. There's just some exciting events that are coming up. I have some other things in my brain, but I don't wanna spill out everything, so.
Any questions for Tina?
Just thank you for everything that you do and my mom works for the VA, so she's always volunteering at the Biggie's event every year and it is huge.
It's fantastic.
I've gone many times with my dad, so.
Right.
Yeah, my stepdaughter goes there every year, she's retired 20-year reserve army.
Good, thank you, thank you for service.
Through all these different outreach activities, is there opportunities for us as a town to help fund some of these things or is this all, because I know the role's really around, you know, chapter 115, but...
Yeah, the council could add on to the veterans budget.
And wondering like how other towns are doing a lot of these things.
The one thing that I was going to look into, July was a big time for recertification for the chapter 115. It's January and July, so that's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of stuff. It's also the fiscal, new fiscal year, so for us, it's also a lot of changes, good changes, but it's a lot. So that was the one thing that I was going to do is reach out and see how everybody's doing this. Like Munson just, she just started there July 1st. She's been a VSO for a while, like, I don't know, I think she's been with DAV for like 12 years. I think she's been a VSO for about five or so. She's a sweetheart, I'm, have her over there, her name is Michelle Murdock. And she's putting on like this, it's a, like a harvest fest. I think that she's calling it a harvest fest over in Munson and she's got all these vendors and everything. I'm like, how did you do this? Like, so I'm really happy to be working with her, but that's the thing about, well, I do know one thing about Munson, I'm not, I'm not gonna talk about it here, it's a very positive thing, but I don't think it's, I'll talk to you guys later. It's very positive and it would be good for us to, to kinda take them as a little bit of a leader in that point. But, but the other people, some people have letters and put them out to the community, but we're really not supposed to do that, you know, but some people do, some people don't. Other people have revolving accounts that we've talked about where you can charge something, maybe, you know, $5 for a spouse or family member or guest and the veterans free or, or whatever how it is. But it's all that sticky municipality stuff that we have to figure out first before we can start really building up different things that we can do. That's why I'm, you know, I try to use other people's money and not our town money and, you know, try to get things free.
Trying to figure out how we can help.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, but, yeah, so it's just, learning to, to work in a municipality is, is a whole monster in itself for me. And so, you know, we've had activities before that have worked and we've figured out, we've worked through it. So, yeah. And then working with other towns will be helpful, especially with Michelle over there. She pulled this out really quick, I'm like, what? So.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is the draft, draft ordinance discussion on the betterments for private roads.
Yeah, so in the, in the packet, and I actually have a few copies that I'll share with the audience. So I know there's been discussion on this policy or ordinance, I should say, for over a year now. When I first started in April, I knew this was one of my priorities. Unfortunately, it took a little time to get to, but over the last month, we have worked on this with council. Unfortunately, I did not get to the point where I felt it was ready for having a first read as an ordinance, so I felt it was best to put on the agenda as a draft discussion because there are a few things in here that still need to be worked out that I will hit with you guys tonight. And I was also looking for any kind of feedback that you guys had. Again, just to expedite it when we go for the first read, I want it set in stone and we're, we're all on the same page here. So if it's best, I'll defer to the chair, but my thought is, I'll go through a couple of the bullet points that I had noted, that I know there's gonna be questions or maybe change on. And then I'd open up for the, the council to have that exchange with me if that works.
Yeah, go ahead and do that, yep.
So the first one is, you'll see, is section two, the acceptance of petitions. One thing that council, when they create this draft policy, their thought was to keep a timeline where you would start the process in July. And with that being said, it would go through that current fiscal year. Things had to be in place if you follow along here, but the expectation would be that the work would start in the next spring. There's really no need to have a date. So it could be open-ended because ultimately the work is gonna have to be scheduled by the DPW anyway. So if someone was to miss this July 15th deadline, the way this policy reads is that they'd have to wait until next July 15th to get back in front of, and start the whole process over again. So my thought is that we can eliminate these dates and it will open it up that we accept these all on a rolling timeline. I think it's fair because again, the work's gonna be scheduled when the work's scheduled. We don't have to tie ourselves to these dates in this policy. So that's, that's number one. And that date you'll see, even though I know it's first mentioned in section two, you'll see dates throughout the whole rest of the ordinance that I'd say we just cross off because again, there's just no need to have the dates outlined in there. The next one is on 2B. I had in here, my thought process was that if the assess, the betterment assessment was going to be $500 or less annually per abutter, that you would only need 51% of the abutters to vote yes in favor of this. Everyone would still be assessed, but you'd only need 51% to make the project happen. The second piece of that was if it's over $500 per year annually, you would need a two-thirds vote of the abutters, again, to make that happen. I've had conversations with counselors individually, I know everyone sits a little bit different on where that stands, but my thought was if it's $500 or less, I would recommend that the vote is just 51% of the abutters and if it was $500 or more annually, then we would look at two-thirds vote. Again, up for feedback on that, but I would like to have an idea of where we should go forward on that by the end of this meeting today. The next piece is on section three, under B.
Before you get to three, what's the reason, just so we can go in order, which might be easier, what's the reason for the $1,000 non-refundable fee?
The $1,000 non-refundable fee is for all the work that goes into this process that we don't bill for. So even if someone walks from it, for example, there's still time allocated between the DPW, myself, the assessor, everyone has to put time in, front-loaded on this, that if this isn't to move forward for any reason, at least we recoup some of that cost.
Does that include if they don't get the 51% vote?
Correct, it's non-refundable, yep. Good on two? Okay, on 3B, one thing I would recommend that we actually change on this is that the applicant actually is to submit the, any surveying and engineering tasks that are done, not handled by the DPW directly. Again, because we wouldn't be recouping that cost with $1,000. There's a lot of pricing, different things that go into that, that as long as the DPW director meets with the applicant, they can discuss what they feels the town needs, such as drainage or whatever else is needed for this project, that they'd have an outline of what we're looking for and then the applicant would work directly with their own surveyor and engineer to bring that forward as part of the overall packet and move forward. And then on 3C, you'll see a couple of dates again, again, those will be, those will be wiped away. One thing also that is not in here on the project scope that I'll have to work with council on is adding in something about easements that is not called out in this, that it certainly should be. So example drainage again, if we need drainage easements, that should be worked into this discussion at some point. So that'll be inserted here before we come to the final one. The next I have is four and five. So going through this whole process, we really came up with, every time we found, closed something out, we actually found more questions on this. And I'll give an example for, for this policy. If we were just to do a road and there was no drainage improvements to this, you actually cannot borrow for just a road. The betterment would only be for, you can't, you can't, you could not borrow for it essentially. So the town would have to pay, if it approved this, it'd have to pay from its own funds and then recoup the money from, same thing, through assessments and betterments, but it, we couldn't borrow for it. So when you add drainage in though, to the, to a project like we've talked about before on, on French Drive, that would add on to it, the drainage piece, that that's where you could borrow for up to however many years the drainage is allowable, capped at 20 for any betterment, it's capped at 20. So again, it's very complex, but all of these individually have to be taken on a case-by-case basis because they're not black and white on how long you could borrow. Prime example is we thought originally that you could actually borrow for 20 years, 30 years on a road. Come to find out, you can't do that for this. If you had drainage onto it though, that's the, that's the primary betterment and the pavement that goes along with it is incidental. That's what gives you the ability, again, to go out and borrow for a longer period of term. So you'll see in this policy, I keep saying policy, it's ordinance, I apologize, that this calls for the town manager to have the final approval on how this is going to be funded. And that's all because, again, every case is different, that it's not a one-size-fits-all that we can't put into this ordinance, if that makes sense. So again, it, it opens flexibility, but also it gives me the ability to find the financing options and borrowing that makes sense for the project without calling it out specifically. So I would recommend that we actually swap four and five just in order because the way you read it, 4B kinda sounds like the Board of Assessors will make that determination. That is not the case, it's actually the town manager who have the determination on the borrowing terms to be moved forward.
So what's the town manager's role in the initial approval? Like this, funding is, funding is after approval?
Correct.
So we're gonna work on it, it's gonna get scheduled, we have to figure out how to pay for it?
Correct.
All right, so what's the town manager's role in the whole review and application process?
Minimal, it actually goes forward to the council to fully review and vet.
So director can't just say no?
Correct, it could still go through the process. The, the, the director, DPW director could say, hey, I'm not recommending this as is, but it'd still be up to the council to vote on that, just because the DPW director does not, is not in favor of the way it's, it's, let's say they put forward no drainage, right? The way I interpret this is that it still could be moved forward to the council, just would not be recommended by the DPW director.
So everything would ultimately come to this point, okay?
Correct, because the council may not have an interest in the betterment itself.
Well, we would have to approve the funding. The betterment can't go forward unless there's funding, or the project can't go forward unless there's funding. So, once there's a project or a recommendation of a project, he would have to bring that to us to be, to say, like he would give the recommendation away the funding.
Projects that weren't recommended would come to us.
They could, I, yeah.
Yeah, because again, the DPW director could say, we want drainage on this and the land association, whoever owns the association, whoever owns the, the road could say, no, we still wanna move forward with this.
I didn't mean to cut you off at number five, sorry.
And those are the, those are everything I flagged. So again, I open this up for just comments from you guys because realistically, I was hopeful to have a, a first read done for this, for this meeting. I just don't feel like we're, we're there yet with where this stands.
So I looked at a few other towns. So I looked at a few other towns, much more detailed. Not that that's bad. There is a definition, and like, if you look at Gloucester, a couple others, what temporary repair means, and what better, like, betterment means. For instance, temporary repair included potholes and surface repairs where there was no excavation required. And I guess you could change that definition. But I think this should say what's not covered that we would do anyways as well.
Yeah, I wouldn't know if I would recommend having that in this. That's more of a, like, internal practice. I would say this is geared towards, again, a group that wants to make the betterment happen. So I'm with you, I get what your point is, I just, I don't think this would be, adding that into this wouldn't be the way to handle that.
Okay, I think that's an important, somewhere.
Nope, I know what you're saying.
That gets rid of the argument of, well, can't use town money to fix the pothole.
But this is a betterment, you wouldn't do a betterment for a pothole.
Right.
So this, this policy...
I just know what I read online.
Yeah, was it a betterment policy, or was it just a public? It was probably like, more like a private road policy, and then a betterment?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, and that's why, I think they're too separate. We can have a discussion on policy later on, I'm fine with that, and just to define really what we're gonna, what the expectation is. Because that's part of this, too, that we've talked about is, there's really not, there's really no money allocated, to my knowledge, in the operating budget to cover any private road maintenance. And there's more than just the ones we hear about, and that the council hears about in town.
Oh yeah, no, there's a lot of private roads.
Hold on one sec, okay? Did you by any chance print out that email from Rick that had all the things listed? I can't see it on my phone. Okay. Just one second, Dave, okay? So, did everybody get a chance to review this, or in detail? All right. So, before we have comment from the poll, I just...
I can forward it to you if you, if you find it.
It's just not showing up on my phone, so, yeah. So, I just want to make sure that... So I think that there's two different things. So first of all, it's, like, establish a policy. So in order to move forward with the betterment, so Bond Council had outlined a whole bunch of things that had to be done to move forward. And so, in order to do that, we need to have an ordinance. And then I think we need a policy, as opposed to an ordinance, as to how we address private roads. I also think that we need to have appropriation every year for town road, private road maintenance, which again, it can't be, you know, it's not going in and fixing the entire road.
Well, you have to define that, we have to define that.
So it's maintenance, right? So yes, so define maintenance and what maintenance we will do on the road. Exactly, which is under a different section of Mass General Law. So, but just to stick with this for, so I'm agreeing with you. I just want to, I want to make sure we don't muddy the water by having...
I know, that's...
I'd rather have two different, yeah, two different things. So, as far as, you know, everything that Brad said, I agree. I don't like the dates, because I don't want someone to be, you know, 30 days late coming forward, and it's like you have to wait a whole another year. I just don't feel that that's necessary.
What if you have a situation where we have to go in a week later and emergency repair stuff, and what, it's August?
Yeah, well, this again would only be for the betterment, not a repair.
And a betterment is going to be a, something that can be planned for, because it's going to be pretty expensive.
So, so then the other... Okay. Okay, so then, the other thing about the the 51% versus two-thirds, so I really think that we have to have a discussion. Like, $500 might be a real lot of money per year for some people.
Oh yeah.
And so I don't, I don't really want to say that, you know, I personally think that it should be two-thirds of people in the area for the improvement want the improvement. And it shouldn't be just because you're 51% of 49%, that something happens. I don't like that percentage personally. I understand what the, what this is doing, and I did review a lot of, a lot of betterment policies, too, or ordinances or bylaws, where they did have that, but I think we have to show some caution on that personally. And then, the other thing that I was just concerned about is, so, the whole idea of... I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. No, the $1,000 I understand, because, so, the $1,000, the $1,000 bucks is basically, if the town goes forward with doing a whole bunch of work, it doesn't, you know, it makes it so that people can't just walk away and the town... So I don't know if the $1,000 is the right fee, I don't know, I might be willing to have a discussion about that, but I understand why there is. And also, if the project goes forward, that $1,000 goes against the cost of the betterment. So the only time you, a person loses out, or a group loses out, is if they come forward to have a project that they want to move forward, and then at the last minute, they decide they're not moving forward. Hopefully, most people that get to the point of bringing something forward are not going to back out, they're going to move forward. Yes, but you could get the two-thirds, in my opinion, you could get the two-thirds majority before you bring it forward as a project to the town. Because if you're the one doing the, if you're the one getting the, hiring the civil engineer, getting, getting a cost estimate from the civil engineer, then you have the ability to go and then talk to all the neighbors and say, this is what it's going to be. And, you know, and you might have to have some interaction from the town as far as, is this going to be a 20-year betterment? Something like that doesn't cost $1,000 to give you an answer. You know, I, so I think that there's ways to work around it. Easement is what I was trying to think about. So, I feel like there's two different kinds of easements, right? So there's the easement if there's drainage and somebody's lawn has to be partially taken, potentially, by the roadwork. But then I also question whether it's an easement just to operate on the road, because they, we do not own the road, the association, or whomever owns it. So, do we need something that everyone's signing off?
Yeah, I talked about this briefly with council, it'd be a right to entry. So we would outline both of those in a final...
Document?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, somebody else can go. I want to pull up the email that we got from Bond Council, just to make sure that this touches on all of the, all the parts. Did anybody else have questions or comments?
So the second part after this would be the private road policy?
Correct. Now, it's not set in stone that we have to go right away on it, but if that's something the council's interested in, yeah, we could look at that.
So, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 6N, if you want to write that down. That gives the authority for commu, Chapter 40, Section 6, N is in DMC, allows us to make temporary repairs to private ways, and then that becomes whatever that means, right?
Right.
So then, in practice, this is what he, this is what the attorney wrote. "It typically involves making the kind of repairs necessary to keep the private way open for general passage, such as, as for public safety, traffic, and the like." And that's pretty much it, okay?
You can interpret that.
Interpret it as...
Oh, what's passable, not passable?
Well, that's really when you get the public safety officials involved to say, is this road passable, right? Or you could...
No, I think that should be the practice.
Yeah.
My opinion.
It matters.
So...
And again, though, we'd have to, just serve, to serve once on the same page with that. That would have to be funded through the budget, because again, we can't use Chapter 90 for that. So if we're going to fund private road, any type of repair, temporary maintenance, that would have to be funded by the council through the operating budget, not through Chapter 90 funding.
Right, and we're not talking, you know, we're probably talking $10,000, like, a budget of about $10,000. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, it was...
We don't want them to rust, though. So, well, right now, we're trying to do a betterment to allow repairs on the road. I think that in order to move forward with a betterment, council has outlined specifically what an ordinance needs to say, and that's what we're trying to do. We are, well, that's a, so then, that's a...
Probably making it all a mess, I'm sorry.
No, and so then, that's a policy, and, you know, I don't know if, I don't think that... And again, I'd have to read those other sections, those other six, whatever number. However, I would say this, if, I don't know if those are sections of Mass General Law that are local acceptance, or those are just sections of Mass General Law that allow us to do what we do. And so, which is, I think it's the latter. So then, what we would do is, we would just, if we wanted to, something in writing that says, but I, I don't, I cannot see that a town would ever not plow a road, because then, an ambulance, a fire truck is not going to be able to pass. I mean, there are towns where the, when it's really bad winters, where a a DPW vehicle with a plow will drive ahead of, especially like if someone has a really long driveway, okay? Where they will actually, like, get in a, get in a pickup truck with a plow, and then plow the way up to the house to make sure that the vehicle can get there. So I, I'm not concerned that something like that is ever going to happen. We're always going to provide access to police, fire, EMTs. So, I think to Mark's point, it's more of, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's to define what the expectation is of what we will do on a private road, so that there's no question moving forward as to what things will happen.
And 6C and 6D are up to the...
Local acceptance.
Local, so...
Those are?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to look at those then?
If we haven't already accepted them.
Yeah, and we might have. But I want to just make sure that, you know, that we're meeting all the points of the ordinance, so when we move forward with any of these projects and get to the point of borrowing, that we have an ordinance that checks off all the boxes of what we need to do to be able to borrow. So, one of the things that I personally think in the, where it says about the 20, up to 20 years, I would like language...
For B?
Yes, thank you. I, I would like language to say that the amount of years is determined by the town. And the reason I'm saying this is, depending on how much we're borrowing, it doesn't make sense potentially to borrow for 20 years.
Right.
And the payback of the debt goes in line with the number of years. So for instance, if we could only borrow for 10 years, we're never going to let people pay back over 20, because we need their money to be able to pay back the debt in the 10 years.
Yep.
So, I just want to have it be clear about that. Yeah, and then I didn't see anything in, there's nothing in this about liability?
It's kind of skimpy.
Okay, I have a touch on liability.
Yeah, it wasn't a whole lot.
And then, there's also a section that talks about, like, that it's open for public use. Is that part of something like they would sign off on? They would say that?
What section is that in?
That's in the, that's in the language that was sent by the attorney. If the way shall have been open to public use for a term of years, and if a cash deposit shall be required, so if the cash deposit is in there, but just that if we do any work, it continues to be...
Open for public.
Open for public use, was that, I didn't see that, but it might have been in there, I don't know.
Yeah, I did see that a lot of...
It's on one, on one, Section 1, it's the last sentence.
Yep. Closed to public use.
But they're not signing this, what I'm saying is, is there something that then...
Holds them accountable to...
Yeah, because this is just our, this is our ordinance, but this is just us saying, like, this is going to be what it is. What I'm saying is, like, it's the person that, the people that own the private way, that do they then sign something that says the road will continue to be open? Like, they're all signing off on something, I don't know. In one sec. Did not forget about you, anybody else? Okay, Dave, but come here so that people at home can hear.
Hey, you guys are so far in the back.
I know, usually in the front row, you hear Mike.
Dave Golden, Aragon Avenue. Couple of things to what Mark had said, most of the betterment programs, if you go online, do that explanation of maintenance versus...
Repair.
Repair. And actually, some of them offer betterments for those maintenance projects, to go in and fill potholes. And there are a ton of these betterment programs online that most of the towns nearby where you were. Almost every one of them has a betterment program. Many of them have that non-refundable fee of $500, not $1,000, and I know you're going to talk to that. And something that I don't see in here, that we discuss, is the prevailing wage. I couldn't find that in any of the betterment programs that I looked at.
It's any, any work done by the town, we'd have to pay prevailing wage, even though I know it's on...
Well, we're paying for it.
You are.
We're the ones that are ultimately paying for it.
So, but you're borrowing with the town's money.
I get that, I understand.
And so, actually, that actually brings up another interesting point, which Bond Council... So when he's saying council, he means attorney, just to not be confused that, by council, us?
Yeah.
But, Bond Council said that, because this is for the benefit of private individuals, because we don't own the roads, those bonds when we borrow would probably be taxable, which then, we didn't have this, we found this out after we had, we met that day. So that would mean that it would cost more money for us to borrow, because it wouldn't be a tax-exempt bond sale, it would be a taxable sale. And I haven't had the ability, and I, I don't know if you did, I haven't had the ability, or the time at this point, to reach out to Bond Council to find out what the differential is between, you know, the interest rate with a tax exempt. I've never done a taxable bond sale, so I have no idea, but we need to find that out, too. So, there are different things that are going to happen...
I realize that.
Because of this.
I also saw nothing about administrative fees in any of the...
That's under, that's under, yeah, because that's under, well, that's under Chapter 60, I believe it is, or 80? 60 or 80, it might be 80. Chapter 80 is betterments, and so there's a section on that.
Many of the towns had their own town engineer with the DPW director determine the scope of work that needed to be done to make the roads...
Saves your guys' money.
What's that?
Saves the people coming for the betterment money, if the town's got the engineer.
It does, but then it puts the cost on to the...
It's $15,000 just for the quote for our three roads.
How much is it?
$15,000.
The issue becomes, though, that this is, and again, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, we have to have topic, but if we're, if we're the ones, so we don't have an in-house town engineer, so we would have to contract out with somebody. If we're going to pay $15,000 for your private road, right? And then you decide not to move forward with the project, the town isn't supposed to spend any money on a private road. So that becomes the whole chicken and the egg thing, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know, it all comes back to that, it's almost like us being penalized for trying to do something to make these roads that are truly not private. These have always been open to the public, these roads, there's nothing on our street signs that say private road. So it, you know, we're just looking for some help to get this done, and this, there's no way we can get this type of money with the engineering, the drainage, we've got quotes, we've got one for $150,000. We can get this done if we can get the two-thirds for $5,000 a house, over 10 years. So, that's a... So that's a pretty doable amount, but once you add in this drainage, the, the, all this other stuff, and they'll crown, they'll do a crown. But once it, all this other stuff gets added in, our roads are going to remain the way they are. I'm just saying that, that's the way we see it. And I'm not blaming anybody. I know you're trying to get this program down. You'd need it for the whole town, not just for us. But it just seems to be running against us rather than for us. And, and as you know, many of those homeowners on that lake pay the highest tax rate in this town and are not getting anything back for that except for emergency. Most, there's only a few children that live there, so we're not using the schools. We're all retired, most of us. It's a very difficult thing to, to try to get past.
Unfortunately, the, the law is very specific that towns cannot spend money on private.
I, I've read that multiple times. I did research. I, I did see that, but.
So what was the hundred and fifty thousand that you're talking about? The cost of paving the road?
All three roads, nine inches with gravel. And, I mean, got us pretty specific.
Yeah, Tiara will, put hardback down, take away the old stuff, put hardback down, how do you do asphalt? I'm sure, uh, you know what Jack, we were talking about.
So that's, so we can only, we can only borrow for five years if it's just a.
I mean, that thing would be.
Right, because it's not the engineer.
Three years, that's, that's. You will never see us.
Nine inches, that's a highway.
Well, that's what they quoted, right? Am I right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
They wanted you to put nine inches down?
For like highways.
I guess the, the full amount of whatever they have to do underneath the under, payment.
You're just excited about.
Is it, is it mass?
Wait for us.
Yeah, it would, but.
Do you guys know if it's mass general law?
And drainage or whatever too, or just leave it.
We can borrow. Oh, but only for five years?
Just leaving it the way it is without drainage.
There's no lights.
You could do a lot.
Those roads are going to go into the lake.
And that's mass general law.
Where did you get estimates from? Who?
That's why you have to have.
Three of them, APMI.
To put the drainage.
It was.
Precise paving. And Lock Hill. Uh, Palmer Paving sent us to other ones because they said that they were union. And we'd get a better quote by going to some of the others that are not.
Who, who was the lowest?
I'm sorry?
Who was the lowest?
APMI.
I bet you Phil Hebert Paving will come in.
No, I, I would have to, I would have to s- s- say, uh, conflict of interest because that's who I work for.
Oh, it is. It did my driveway.
And again, this, this, just, this, this goes into how difficult this whole process is because, um, I had conversations with Dave and Patty about this, and this is tough because they're, they're getting a price quote, right? And that's what they're going to their neighborhood saying, hey, this is our cost estimate.
Which we haven't done yet.
No, you haven't done, but I'm saying like, that's the pro, that's what you would think you'd usually follow. But reality is, all that matters for pricing at the end of the day is what the town gets for a quote back. It's great they get their own, but the reality is the town has to put it out to bid and follow our procurement procedures, which is why unfortunately.
That's why you have your prevailing wage.
Right, the only way they could do it is they would have to have an association or something that charges everybody every year so much. And then they'd just go ahead and fix the road themselves and say nothing to the town.
It's just not enough to cover.
Try the dam, they, uh.
And they can't enforce that everyone pays. This is the only mechanism they have to enforce that everyone pays their share of this. Everyone could sign on to you guys saying, great, we'll pay, but reality is you don't have the check. So that's the.
They also don't have the mechanism to borrow the way their association is set up, so that, right? With anything else being said, that just stops it right there.
Not an HOA.
Yeah, okay. So were you.
Did you get an estimate to just, um, word to just put four inches of asphalt over everything? Can they come in, skimcoat it and then put?
I think the problem is.
Five inches over it?
There's nothing there for, in a lot of places for it to adhere to.
Right.
There's no base.
That's what.
Okay, got you, got you.
You know, the French guy now, there is one piece of asphalt that is clearly level and smooth, and that's right in front of the house.
They're not, well, next thing.
It did my driveway. It did in front of the house back in twenty eighteen, I think, and it looks fine. And he, he didn't do anything. He did just what you're saying.
Right.
Four inches on top.
Right.
And it's fine. So that is feasible. I mean, you could do that. Maybe it won't last thirty or forty years, but it'll last twenty or thirty.
Or, I've seen better gravel roads in New Hampshire than some of our roads here. It, you know, quite frankly, for a short road like that, that might be your.
Except for oil because of the lake. I believe it's.
You're not, they're not, you don't have to have it oiled.
Oh, not an oil?
No. I'm saying gravel.
Just put a.
Gravel, hard pack.
We would be.
Or then, then you could throw down, uh, millings. Just use millings.
Yeah, but then they get plowed up.
Yeah, the, the millings will harden up good, but I, I would, just gravel, like I said, gravel, because then every spring, all, all you're doing is regrading it, adding gravel and compacting it.
The recycled millings that they put down last year, last.
They washed, right.
It's gone.
I mean, Phil, you need to drive up there. I mean, there's sections of the road that literally are like.
I, I remember one of them.
All, everything underneath is undermined. It's like this.
Way would be to reclaim it.
Yeah, that's what needs to probably be done, but.
That's not what they, they got estimates that these guys are going to come rip it all up. And, well, I guess that's even a more proper way. If you're not going to reclaim it, is to dig down, you're going to have to dig down eight inches, get rid of that gravel, bring new gravel, compact it. And theoretically, i- i- it should be compacted and then another week later recompacted if you want really good compaction. You know, then they're, they're going to have to test it.
Take whatever we can get.
But, I don't know, I would, uh, like I said, I've seen better gravel roads in New Hampshire than some of our road, regular tar roads out here. It's a very doable, easy, easy maintenance. You start to get a pothole, you, you add gravel, hard pack. You know, you're done.
And that's something that the association can build into the fees by raising the fees a certain amount. Goes into a special fund for nothing but these roads.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the Five Bridge Road, every year they flood it and it goes through a swamp. And they fix it every year. I don't know if it's a scraper they use or what, but through a swamp and they do it.
We're not going to maintain it anyway.
Once we got the sewer put in there in like, in nineteen ninety or whatever, they put that, some kind of hardback in, right, because of manholes. And it lasted good for, um, twenty years, but now it's just, it's gone.
Gone.
But before that, it was sand and it was rain. And we've been trying to get a tow back to that, but I think because of the manholes, the town doesn't have a grader. They graded twice a year and everything should be out and all the holes should be gone. It was all sand. It was all sand.
There's no manholes there in the other road.
Yeah, we got.
By Bridge, yeah. Maybe that's why they can do that.
Whatever Matt did, this most recent round on French is, is great. After all these rains.
Yeah.
Even with the, with the way that there was nothing underneath it, they're all sticking.
Good.
Thank you.
So for the repair, so when you talk about the repair of private roads or putting something in the budget for the repair of private roads, that's likely the way we're going to have to go because this seems like it's not going to be attainable for most people. Because we, the money that we have to spend personally before we can even find out if the percentage of the people will do it, what you guys give us a price for the prevailing wage is a lot of money.
Yeah.
So I want to, I, I put together this number of the options, not handing out, telling you how you own these private OJ up. I would like you to look at it to make sure I get correct information out of you. And, um, that this is the option that we have up here, that's all.
Okay. Anything else on this? All right, so. Okay, I'm going to check out what six C means.
That's all snow removal. Yeah, six D and six N, six C, six D are both snow removal.
Six C here.
Oh.
Over six C.
And we haven't accepted it. I went through our list of acceptances.
What is it? So what is it? Six B and?
Six C.
D, oh, C and D, sorry.
C and D. Six B and six C. Okay. Uh, all right, next item is Resolution twenty twenty five zero four, which is a motion to petition the general court for a special act for one on premise and one off premise alcohol license.
So the, the last batch that we just got back, did we assign those?
Yes, you can, you can only, um, when you petition the general court, you have to have specific locations. And these are just two additional addresses that, uh, came forward. And I don't think there's any better method than just saying.
Oh, no, no, I agree. I just wanted to.
When businesses need them.
So this is for two, uh, two zero five four Bridge Street, which is the former Pinocchio's location. And the second is for Jane Alden's, which currently has a seasonal license and is looking for a full license.
Correct.
Excuse me, where was the first one again?
Former Pinocchio's.
And went through the whole process with that business, they, um, did not keep up with their.
Liquor license.
Liquor license, so that's why.
They lost it.
They lost it, exactly. Yep.
And are they on track to actually be opening and?
I have not actually followed up with the owner on where they were. I do know though, um, back in April, I think when I first talked to him, he was hopeful to have everything ready to go, um, by late fall, early winter.
I only ask is now we're going through the process of getting them a liquor license or asking for two more for that location. Well, one. So what happens?
My thought is that just based on the timeline of the prior one that we still submitted that they're going to be opening before, we'll have the ability to open before we even get this approved, so.
And they can do the BYOB if that's the case.
Uh, can they?
We don't have that.
Yes, we do. We have BYOB.
Yeah, we didn't say we, they, we didn't put anything in place that limits that.
Well, but I do think that there is something in the bylaw, or not bylaw, ordinance, isn't ordinance the BYOB or is it just a?
I don't think we even passed it.
I forget what it is. I thought we did.
I don't think we did.
But I think that there's something that says if you have a pending liquor license, like you can't BYOB.
Oh, that hasn't, well, they don't really have one until it's approved by the legislature.
But even if.
Until it goes through the liquor board.
It's, isn't it considered pending if they?
License.
I don't know. I don't know. I have no idea.
I would have to look at the language again, but I thought that was in there.
And so.
I don't think we passed it.
None of that, none of that. Bring on your own, we never passed anything with that.
Whether we're going to approve two more licenses.
I think they were just saying, if they, if they got to the finish line before this happened, could they serve alcohol as a BYOB?
No, my question was if we go send off and ask for two more licenses and nothing happens here, now what? Now we have two licenses that we can give to somebody else?
Well, we did that for the corner of CVS, right? And now is that going to be not a, not a restaurant?
No, we, well, we changed the address of that one.
That was an edit we made.
That was an.
Two months ago now, maybe?
Yeah, I was, I was always curious on how that edit happened, but the edit happened. And.
And that was the recommendation from.
This.
State House.
State House, yes.
From Smolow's office.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we mention who the owner is of Pinocchio's?
Um.
Quite. For the license.
I don't remember. That's the.
The owner of the, um.
Roosters.
Roosters.
Cantina.
Cantina.
Omar, don't know the last name.
He was a part of the business. Yeah, he was a part of Pinocchio's before. Um, do we have any updates on that corner pass station?
That is going to be a dentist office.
Is it confirmed?
Uh, yes, I have that confirmed.
So we did not get, we did not get a liquor license for that location?
I think we changed the address.
No, the address was changed.
That one went to Friendly's.
I don't think it went through the council that it was changed, but it was changed. It came through.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we brought it, it was brought back.
When, um, when Bob was here that.
And then we did the amendment.
Yeah.
Like my first or second month here.
Yep.
So did Jane Alden's, did they send you something in writing or?
We met with them as the license commission and, uh, we are recommending that they get approved. They sat in front of us.
Yeah, they came down. They talked to me.
Okay, so what do you need here? Approval to request to additional liquor licenses?
You got it.
Okay, do you have a motion to, uh, petition the legislature for two additional liquor licenses, one for two oh five four Bridge Street? And the second for Jane Alden's?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions? Okay. Council rules. Anybody look at them?
Yes. Jeez, I gotta say like.
Anybody have any suggested changes?
Did we talk about, I don't know if this happened before the last time that we looked, reviewed the rules or the procedures, but with that court ruling on public comment?
Yes, so did that get put in here now? So it's in here?
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see.
I don't remember.
I don't recall. I think the language falls in line with, but I don't think it specifically calls that up.
Wow.
Uh, so this section was supposedly rewritten by the attorney.
Okay.
So under public comment period, this was, I mean, this was the language that we had when Bob was here?
Correct.
Okay.
That you voted in.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, and that was my, I think that was my biggest thing. I was trying to think if anything came up, anything else had come up. But.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think for the most part, we did a pretty good cleanup of this a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago.
Yeah.
All right, so everybody's good with these?
Yep.
Yep.
So, uh, amended twenty nineteen though should get changed to whatever the amended day that we added the new, uh, public comments section. And then there's no update today. We're just leaving it the way it is.
Yep.
So that would be the only date that that should change. It's probably, um, I don't know if that's on the first page. Yeah, so, I mean, it's on the bottom part, but I would say probably what should be happening is where it says rules of procedure. It should be like the original day we voted them, then if it was amended, whatever date, and then as it keeps getting amended, you keep adding, then it got amended.
Yep.
Yeah, so I don't know if we have that or not, but if not.
I can change the header on, we'll change the header on these so they're all uniform going forward and it has that outline.
Yeah, the footer is going to, it'll automatically change on each page amended, uh, February twenty twenty four.
Is everyone fine getting rid of the footer?
Yeah.
Yep.
But what I'm saying is usually.
Or even on the title page.
Yes.
Yeah, right underneath.
Yep.
Oh, title, create a title page.
Okay, next is, uh, sub, uh, council subcommittees. So, uh, I didn't, these are the last year's subcommittees in the packet. I didn't hear back from fifty percent of the people here, so I.
Did you send it? Did you send it email or a text?
We had talked about it at the last meeting.
Oh, oh, yeah, I remember that.
So, anyway, um, we'll do this at the next meeting because people did not get back to me.
Do you think we're still talking about council rules?
Nope, nope. We're on subcommittees. I don't know. Is that making a noise? They can't hear.
Hey, truth is mostly you.
I, I have a microphone. I'm talking. I, I don't know.
Right, you're fifty, you're, you're good.
They've been talking to each other a lot.
I know, it's back on each other. It never gets out here, it's all.
We were reviewing the council rules amongst ourselves and we did not make any changes. And now we are moving on to subcommittees of which we're taking no action because half of the committee did not get back to me with what subcommittees they would like to be on. So that's getting tabled to the next meeting.
Okay, one, uh, give back to the, uh, council meeting, there's a few meetings, how you said that the Supreme Court came down with, uh, some kind of, uh, finding here, it was back to, uh, town council meetings were being held and.
It allows people the ability to, during public comments, um, was it a Supreme Court ruling? I can't even remember at this point.
Supreme judicial, it was the Massachusetts Supreme Court. So
it, it changed the way that public comment periods could be handled at a meeting. So we updated our language. Uh, it's really not a big deal for here because we allow the public to talk. It was more in other communities or where people were not allowed to talk during a public comment period. It also allows you, if you'd like to be mean to us, you can do that. There is pretty much no deforum anymore. Um, that's pretty much how the, how the rules. Um, that's pretty much how the, how the rules changed, so.
I remember one meeting, I wanted to, we could check down a, uh, subject at hand and you told me to take the person, talk to them out in the hallway after meeting.
Probably after the public comment period, right?
No, it was Darvin.
Uh, no, I think that was a presentation and it wasn't open to public comment, so there's a difference. So not, so every agenda item is not an agenda item that the public has to be allowed to weigh in on. So if it's a public hearing, you have the ability to speak during a public hearing, we allow you to speak during visitors' comments. I have been, I, I think that we are pretty, um.
Lax, lenient.
Lenient, thank you, of allowing people that come into our meeting to interject their opinions. I will tell you, there are a lot of communities that unless it is a pub, it is an actual public hearing, people are not allowed to talk. So there are times when I will say, if we had a public hearing, like on the budget the week before, and now we're ready to go to a vote, I will say no because we had a public hearing, we allowed people, we put people on notice. But for the most part, I let people speak and so, um, but yes, I think, I don't remember what specifically the topic was that we asked you to.
We were talking about Forest Lake when we, uh.
Oh, yeah, so they were here to just give us some information and you had a lot of questions. And so, you know, if we have a lot on the agenda and you had specific, specific questions for that person, that's why I asked you to speak to them. Uh, I will also, if you have a specific question that I feel, so we, we, we interject with everybody if they have an issue. We really don't even have to do that, you could come up and we could just be totally stone-faced and I could say thank you and go, you would go on your way. We try, I try not to do that, I try to, uh, interact with people as, as well as the counselor or the manager. Those things are not necessary, but we try to be, have an open, you know, an open meeting where this is not just our meeting, but we want the public to comment if you have questions and we, you know, we try to do that. So I think that we as a council do a very good job of allowing the public to speak. But I will also, if you have a very specific question of something that I feel that it would be better served for you to contact the town manager afterwards on, I will say that, just so that we can keep the meeting, meeting moving along. It depends, I, I mean, it's kind of, you know, us chairing the meeting, I, again, I, I try to take every situation, uh, you know, I do the best I can, but yes, I, if it was the Lake Tops, uh, the Forest Lake, um, meeting, you probably, you had a question specific to that person's presentation and yes, I would have asked you to speak to her directly, so, okay?
If you do, it's better now.
Okay, I think, cause I'm yell, I think I'm yelling.
Scaring the crap out of me. See?
Yeah.
I did, I did, okay, uh, town manager's report.
Quite a few things going on in town, so the track at Duke Field is officially open for the public, so anyone who wants to utilize that, it is officially open. On August twenty eighth, um, it's the opening day for school, so this is my annual reminder, uh, to drive safely around town. Um, it gets a little bit hectic, you know, plus the school department, I used to get a lot of phone calls. Um, and again, there's only so many police officers we can post in certain areas of town, so, uh, just a reminder everyone to be safe, leave early, uh, cause we're back on the school schedule. September twelfth, um, we will be hosting a property auction for three thousand two East Street and Zero Cavendish Street in Bonsville. Um, we will have information available in person at Town Hall and also online. Um, but any question specific to the property should be sent to Zico's group, uh, who will be running the auction. The job description for the facilities director is very close to being finalized, I anticipate that to post within two weeks. Um, so I'm excited about that, to get someone aboard here and really help me, uh, with the capital plans and defining all of our needs across town. Real estate exemptions for veterans, seniors, blind and surviving spouses are now available at the assessor's office. The DPW received two grant awards, uh, one is for twelve thousand dollars for railroad public crossing upgrades and the second is for two hundred and eight thousand, um, under the shared streets grant. The grant will be utilized for improving pedestrian access, uh, and to a public transit stop at the Ocean State Big Y Plaza. And next month, uh, DPW director Matt Morse, uh, will be here giving his update, um, from his position and then he'll give you more detail on that. But, um, one thing I will say, I've always thought there was a area in town that we need to do more work on, so I'm excited to really look at that area because it is a high walk zone that people really don't think about that. There's no good crossing point, uh, to get from on the corner of Sheer Street down into that plaza, so it, this will be a nice upgrade. And again, um, the DPW director will give more detail and outline that project at the next meeting. One question that I get daily is Liberty Plaza, so Liberty Plaza is moving forward, um, with one foundation estimated to be complete within a month. And right after that, the Wood Trusts will be going up, uh, again shortly after, so that project is moving forward. The, uh, DPW, um, as was mentioned in the, uh, public comment period, um, they patched up, uh, the corner of French and Farragon and I'm happy to know that, that's, uh, that's standing still and hopefully it buys us a little bit more time, um, as we work through the ordinance. And that was all I had.
Any questions for Brad?
Uh, just a couple, not real specific to that stuff, but, um, are we, are we updating and we actively marketing the properties that we have up, that we had up online in that presentation from the town planner? And, uh, you know, available properties, who owns on square footage?
Um, I can say that I don't know where that stands, I will say though that one of my goals for the town planner this year, again, have not actually officially met with her on that, but is to have an, uh, actual ongoing working document that when we get phone calls, we can say, just so you know, this is available, this is the square footage, um, all the variables in that that are available. I would like to have that because there is a huge marketing piece that sometimes I get phone calls of saying, what's available in town? That I don't have a good working doc that I would like to have that and also really who to put them in contact with. Uh, cause that's the biggest piece to it, so, um, that is a piece, I'm actually happy you mentioned this because it opens up the door for another, one other thing I'm looking at, which is really highlighting all of our businesses in town. One thing I think, um, this role can certainly improve on is really highlighting all the good practice and good business that goes on within town. Um, I'm hopeful to work with, um, local papers and everything to, when businesses start opening up, working with, uh, the, um, the Chamber of Commerce as well to really be visible and get there for the grand openings at least that, uh, you can say, hey, Palmer Town Manager, X, Y, and Z was there, and it's just good press to get out there and, and highlight new businesses. So that is something that I anticipate, um, starting, uh, very soon working with the Chamber on.
So also with the Chamber, with, uh, besides the Chamber, there's also the Ware Palmer Business. It's gonna shoot me, uh.
Yeah, I forget the, the title, I know exactly what you're talking about though.
Yeah, it's like, it's very similar to the Chamber, they have a ton of companies that are involved. Uh, they do a lot of, you know, self-marketing and promoting and stuff like that.
Exactly.
Might be the Palmer Ware Business Council or something collective. Palmer Ware?
Palmer Ware, Ware's in the title.
Uh, not Chris, forget the guy's name, but anyways.
The guy from the journal?
Say again?
The guy from the journal?
Yeah, yeah.
He was talking about the other one?
Uh, Dan Turley?
Dan Flynn?
Yeah, Dan Flynn, yeah. Anyway, I want to engage all those groups because again, I think we, there's a lot of good that happens in town that does not get marketed for that, we want to push that positive that goes on in town.
Awesome. That's all I had.
Um, just, so I don't want to forget to mention this, but, uh, you know, the signs we have, like, that were done as part of the community development, uh, grant, so they're the green.
Right off the.
Like, they're on like Vane Street in Palmer and they're like at the, at the entrance, uh, when you exit the town, like, they're, like, they're on High Street, there's a whole bunch. So I think that somebody may have taken a bunch of the locations off and then moved them. So for instance, like Memorial Hall, which would be on the sign should be left, is right. And then there's a whole bunch of them where the one, like at the top where it had whatever, like the, maybe it was like the, the picture of like this, you know, with the town, the emblem of the town of Palmer, um, this, this or whatever.
The seal.
It's just gone. Oh, there's a whole, so I think that something definitely happened and someone needs to take a drive around town and note that because if, again, if you're on, um, so Park Street, heading to Thorndike Street, so coming down from like my end, the memorial, the memorial hall sign points right and it's down that road left. And that's the only sign on it, and then when you get further down on, on Park Street before you get to the light to get on Thorndike Street, those are just gone.
Oh.
There's like one left. So we need to either get signage.
Those have been having fun.
I don't know how they come down, it's almost like, are they magnetic or are they screwed, I don't know. Something's not right there.
Are they at the diner?
Yes, I feed them all. I even get donations for the homeless from certain people.
Okay, anything else for Brad's report? Counselor's roundtable, anything, miscellaneous comments?
Um, light, light up, you're on that, right, light up Palmer? Can you explain, uh, what is it, September, the decoration for?
All the, uh, current ones will come down.
No, for the Halloween, house decorate?
They're doing Halloween.
Halloween.
Yeah, that's, that is, uh, Scarlet Lamontis.
Okay.
We haven't had a meeting in a few months, so I'm not really sure.
Okay, I, I just seen it on their page or whatever.
Like house decorating?
Yeah, for Halloween.
They're doing a Halloween decorating contest and says stay tuned, there'll be more information coming. First annual Halloween house decorating contest, which is great. That's all it says, stay tuned.
Yeah, 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 I know, I, I texted both back and forth and supposedly Thirteenth World is gonna kind of help out with prizes or something, I guess.
Oh, for, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment on the recent efforts to bring the rail station to Palmer. I know that there were a series of meetings that, um, a specific group had with DOT, Dave, you were one of them. Um, and I think just, I wanted to voice my continued support of bringing rail to Palmer. Um, I'm, my dad has been an Amtrak employee for almost thirty years and I travel to Boston pretty frequently for work, so I can relate to all of the people in, in our community and near, in nearby communities who would love to have that transportation option of going into the big city. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing the, the results of that study and working with DOT to make sure that this rail stop has zero one zero six nine zip code.
So just for the council's aware too, um, I'm planning on working with Mass DOT for a presentation to give where Phase One stands. So I'll give you the quick highlight, six of the eleven sites are being proposed to move forward to Phase Two, um, five of which are all in Palmer, there's one on the outskirts.
In Wilbraham.
In Wilbraham, yes, so more information to come on that, um, but Mass DOT has said that they would come to give a presentation on where that stands, so hopeful at some point in September.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Oh, I also just want to make a plug for the National Night Out, I think it was very successful and I really enjoyed seeing how it's not, it's grown to be more than just public safety and we've brought in DPW and Board of Health and assessing and recreation and I, uh, think it's.
Town Hall was there.
Yeah, I think it's a really good effort amongst everybody in Town Hall and, um, across all of our departments of working together and putting together a really positive event for the community.
Okay, so we're gonna enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Number Three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, this is for Palmer Motorsports Park. And then we will also be under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Number Six, which is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And this is for Congress Middle School and Thorndike Grammar School. Uh, I so declare on both, I'm looking for a motion, uh, to enter executive session, we will adjourn, um, from executive session, we will not be coming back to formal session, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
By, just second, by Carl. Okay, this is a, we'll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Phil.
Yes.
Chris.
Aye.
Jess.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, good night.